Good. City Clerk, are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to the May 20th meeting of the Temple Terrace Community Redevelopment Agency. First order of business is the approval of the minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of our February 18th meeting? And if so, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded, I think, Councilmember Fernandez Beater. Okay, Councilmember Fernandez, any discussion, corrections to the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays, minutes are adopted. Second item of business is a resolution approving the CRA Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the fiscal year ending September 30th of 2024. And our Finance Director, Jim Ingram, is here to explain. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good afternoon.
Us and Board members. Yes, we have a resolution to approve the CRA Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024. Four of us Mazars, the city's auditor, has completed the annual CRA audit. And I am here to answer any questions. We also have Jeff Wolf, our lead auditor for four of us Mazars, who can answer any questions directed to him either, so.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Councilmembers, Board members, other questions? Boardmember Fernandez.
For this audit, because we have an audit, an overall audit of the city every year, is this audit conducted separate from, I mean, meaning do we keep these financial statements completely separate from the rest of the city's financial reporting and recording? Or is this just a sub-audit of the larger audit?
I guess you would call it a sub-audit. It's, it is included as part of the regular audit of the city. And there is also, for reporting requirements, you want to, like, address that?
Good evening. Yeah, so it is a separate fund within the city. It is part of the city's audit. So it's part of the city's act for, three, four years ago, there was some legislation that came down that required them to be separately audited standalone financial statements. So it's really a compliance audit, you know, is, is the money being, or is the TIF being calculated correctly and received? Then is the money being spent in accordance with the CRA plan? So, you know, no, there was no findings, no issues noted with our audit. So ultimately, you can be sure that the CRA is being spent, you know, as part of your plan. But it is part of the city audit as well. But it's just, it gets a higher focus when it's a standalone financial statements.
And I just have another question. And this, this isn't necessarily specific to the audit, but more the overall financial ability of the CRA. And that, is the CRA able to receive grants either from county or other governments, like federal governments? And then that would necessitate a separate audit if we are able to do that. But how are, what sources of funds are we allowed to bring into the CRA besides the TIF revenue?
Typically, I mean, it's, the grant would most likely go through the city. And then if it's eligible expenditure, it could be funneled through the CRA. So we could still go there, but typically, the city most likely would be the recipient. Not saying that can't, you know, be directly through the CRA, but typically, we don't see too much grant revenue, you know, coming through directly to the CRA.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have any questions of either of you. Thank you for being here. It always makes us a little nervous when you come, but thank you. Mr. Ingram, I don't have any questions. That conclude your report?
Yep.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Do we need a resolution for this?
We do. Board members, if the, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for year ending September 30th, 2024 is acceptable, is there a motion?
Move to approve the CRA Annual Comprehensive Financial Report fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Chambers, seconded by Vice Mayor Schistler. Any discussion of the motion?
Just one question.
Board member.
And I just want, for, for people in the public to know, is this document already accessible online?
Yes, it is on our. This document is accessible online on our Finance Department website. It'll say 2024 Annual Compre, uh, I'm sorry, CRA Annual Comprehensive, there's, we have two annual comprehensive reports.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Next, we have a status update on the CRA, and our Community Development, Greg Pauli, is here to explain. Good evening, Mr. Paul.
Good evening, Chair, Board members. Once again, Greg Pauli here this evening to provide you a quick update on some of the activities that have occurred since we last met to discuss the CRA parcels. If you recall, we met last at a workshop on the 8th of April. This warrants applause.
How are you, sir? I thought the meeting started.
This is a CRA. Oh, excuse me. Please bear with me. We had a workshop on the 8th of last month. We talked about a lot of things. You provided some guidance and feedback. And shortly after that meeting, I did meet with our liaison from Florida ROI, Mr. John Lochner, who's in the audience with us this evening. And we talked about a couple of key takeaways that we pulled out of that meeting. The first was to provide an updated range of guidance to Mr. Lochner and his team to better help them market and promote our CRA properties for sale. The, the second takeaway that we mentioned there was loosening the restrictions on speculative The, the primary piece of that was that possibly to, to be more open to speculative development, provided that there are some parameters on those end users. And we also talked about where the opportunity presents itself, allowing for negotiating a possibility of a public space to be developed in conjunction with a commercial property, specifically at the 8901 piece. Now, a lot of what I'm going to talk about here this evening is focused on the 8901 piece, but as you see, when we get into this, much of it applies to 8447 also, the old restaurant piece, a little further down the street. Could I get the slides back up, please? Okay, here again, we've got the 8901 piece showed just to the south of the Fountain Shops. Now, for comparison, the southernmost building there on the Fountain Shops, I'm sure most of you are familiar, that is one building that houses a small sandwich shop and a, and a national chain coffee shop. It's not a very big building. It's about 3,500 square feet. So in order to house a restaurant type, I know there was some discussion about if we were to subdivide the 8901 parcel, how would that really look? How would that really fit? Realistically, you probably wouldn't be looking at constructing buildings much smaller than what you see on the screen here to the, picture to the north. I can tell you that I've looked at this piece of property, both subdividing it from the north-south bilateral and also an east-west bilateral. With the north-south bilateral, it provides the westernmost narrow piece to have all roadway frontage. And I know we talked about roadway, roadway frontage being prime real estate for a commercial developer. However, I will throw out for consideration, dividing the parcel in that direction gives you almost insufficient space for additional parking to satisfy those, satisfy any businesses on that piece. Dividing it on an east-west lateral would basically be cutting it into two relatively square parcels and would allow for more options with regards to if we did find a develop, there, a developer that wished to include a public space component. The next thing we hit on is, we just talked about negotiating possibilities for public space, and the next thing is to prioritize overall community value of any given project over other considerations. This allows our brokerage team to look at the true value that a project brings to the table and consider other, consider, or consider other options within the proposal. And you've heard us talk about the downtown overlay district, the DOD. This is just a quick summary snapshot of some of the permitted uses within that space. The text is quite lengthy, so it's hard for me to provide all of the text in the form of a, of a slide. But here's a general outline of some of those permitted uses. And the map chart to the right shows the boundaries of the DOD. You can see that it's, it's made up in the southeast quadrant of the CRA. It starts at Bullard Parkway along the east side of 56th Street, continues south until you get to the Windexy Plaza. The big void there in the middle is the Windexy Plaza. And then it, it breaks there, and then it starts over again when you get to Chicago, and it continues south to River Hills, minus the little corner piece right there on the northeast corner of the intersection. So again, I'm not going to read all of those. I'll leave them on screen for a second or two, let everybody kind of take them in, and just know that those are permitted uses as they apply to those two shaded areas on the And here is some of the prohibited uses in that same space, that same, those same two shaded spaces. You'll see there's a lot of prohibitions on auto-related activities. And then there's some kind of random prohibitions that address other areas, other industries. You will see I put an asterisk next to drive-through because there is a prohibition for drive-throughs. But as, as I'm sure you are aware, the city has made exceptions in the past for drive-throughs in that space. Now, this area here, shaded on this map, is the REOA. The REOA is not actually part of any underlying zoning or development district, but it is an agreement between the property owners in that space. Here are some of the prohibited uses that are called out within the REOA. And again, I'm not going to read these. I do have an asterisk there at the top. Massage parlors are called out as a prohibition, but they are allowed if they are in conjunction with a day spa, medical office, or therapeutic facility that provides those services. And I'll leave those up for just a moment.
Stockyard.
Believe it or not, it's in there. I, I haven't seen any cattle in that area, but it's in there. And lastly, I have a slide up here, and I'll, I'll preface this slide by saying I realize that some of these ideas are just a summary, just a snapshot of things that maybe some of the members here have discussed, things that staff has discussed, things that we hear just from applicants within the community. There's no formal list here. This is just an idea of things that you may want to consider. And in all reality, this is that section that's probably going to possibly require a follow-up meeting where we can workshop some of these ideas to discuss these items, or maybe some items that aren't even on the list. So hotel motel, I can tell you that we do have, and, and these, these proposals are not formalized, so I can't discuss them publicly. I can only speak very generically. We do have a couple of parties that are interested for two completely separate projects. And both of those projects would require some tweaking and modification of the allowed uses. And without tipping my hand on current deals that are in the making, I can't, unfortunately, I can't really call them out specifically. But you see here, hotel motel, bars, lounges, nightclubs. I believe at the last meeting, the mayor actually mentioned, do we want bars in that space? Do we want these types of businesses in that space? And these are things that are not currently considered on the approved uses, but they could be, depending on the direction that this board and the city council wants to provide. Smoke and vape shops, hookah lounges, some of these are on the list because we have heard throughout the community that we seem to have an overabundance of some of these locations. The hair, beauty, supplies, the wig shops, things of that nature, sometimes there's an overabundance of some of these businesses, and that's how some of them made it onto the list. The sporting activities, these, this could include, you know, a, a sporting activity that's built on-site. We would obviously want to see that accompanied by maybe a restaurant function, something that provides food and beverage, and turns it more into a destination spot as opposed to just a place for someone to go and play a given sport. And then finally, I know this comes up from time to time with regards to some of the consumable edibles and the topicals and things of that nature. Some people are vehemently opposed to businesses that sell these items, and this is something that we simply may want to discuss and consider in more detail at a later time. And with that, I did rush through it, so I'm more than happy to back up the slides and talk about anything. I know we don't have a lot of time in our CRA, but I at least wanted to tee up some ideas and maybe collect some feedback on things that you may want to see added to the list of items to discuss at a future engagement.
Board members? Vice Mayor Schistler?
Yeah, you said you have some potential deals in the works. At what stage are these in, in, in the life cycle?
One of them is currently trying to satisfy some layout constrictions. As you know, all I'm talking about here are business types and uses. But the CRA also has a variety of standards, development standards, to include the way a site is laid out, the way and location that structures are, are constructed, and things of that nature. So one of them is trying to work out those details. Another one is in verbal negotiations with our broker and has not provided anything as of yet.
I guess my court, my, at least my, my second part, do we need to, we're not going to meet again till, what, August? I think is the next CRA?
That's correct, but I might be a little more aggressive with requesting special meetings if those opportunities present themselves sooner, which is the advantage, of course, of having our CRA immediately before a council meeting.
That's why, that's, that was my point. I mean, if, if you're close on some of these, I think we need to, don't wait, don't wait till August if we don't have to.
I agree 100%, and I, I will be more than happy to work with the city manager on, on presenting a special meeting opportunity if and when those ideas come to a valid proposal to bring before you.
Boardmember Fernandez?
So I, I want to go back to the, the layout, the parcels and the division. I know you talked about dividing east-west, north-south, et cetera, but they, that 8901 is already subdivided into 13 smaller parcels, correct?
That is correct. And if you remember, those, those parcels are narrow parcels that run east to west.
56 to the interior road.
That is correct.
Okay, so, so my question for you has to do with projects for construction layout or parcel layout. Let's say that a, a developer wants to develop maybe a couple of restaurants and some public space to, to help activate the, the restaurants. How, how flexible would they need to buy, they, they would be able to buy multiple parcels then if they needed to? They don't have to buy all of 8901. Is that correct? They can buy a portion of it?
I think it's going to be project-specific on that. We didn't, we didn't actually talk about breaking it apart in that fashion. We did talk more about dedicating a portion of it to a single developer if that developer wishes to build a project in conjunction with a public space being developed there, you know, right there, too. We have to be careful about how we would divide it because you don't want to bite off too much of the prime piece and leave a parcel that is devalued, if you will. You want to, you want to try to maintain some equity there. Regardless of how you divide the property, you still want to maintain value across the entire piece.
So basically, when a project comes in front of our representatives, we, we're looking at a couple of things, but they don't necessarily, the developer doesn't necessarily have to purchase the whole property, but we need, we are looking at the project being presented if it's only going to use a portion of this property that the rest, whatever remains is still a viable choice for, that somebody else could then come in and use for a project.
I can tell you that's, I have to answer that in two different ways. Because the first way is our broker is actually looking for a buyer that can, that can acquire the entire piece and develop it appropriately. If, if the, if the, the board subsequent to the council wishes to provide direction on separating that and dividing that, that direction has not been given to our broker. However, we have been open and upfront with our broker about entertaining ideas that may lead to that. We're not leading with it, but we're listening to it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, my, I just want to make sure that whatever projects are coming up, that we're looking at, we're measuring them from multiple methods, saying, this is a great project, it's going to leave half of the property untouched, that, but that's still a viable piece, and there's still a market for that. Or this is a great project, but it's going to leave a small portion that's, that's not a usable space. So I, that's all, that's my only, and then my only other question for you is with regard to the, the developers or the projects that might come, that you're evaluating that might come before us, at what point does this agency, and this is for the people listening at home, what, what point does this agency have the ability to say yes or no to a project?
Sure, I'd be happy to walk through that for everyone. Our broker is our first point of contact with all potential buyers. Our broker has an established guidance, most recently, as I mentioned, has recently been amended, but he has an established set of guides that he's going to go through when a possible buyer reaches out to him. If a buyer reaches out to me or anyone else here in staff, we very politely refer them to our broker because the contract is through our broker. So with that said, the details of that initial process are worked out directly with Mr. Lochner or Mr. Odom. And when that buyer submits a viable letter of interest to the city, that then is reviewed by myself, it's reviewed by the city manager, we look at it as, we look at it on its merits for what the project is and what the value of that project is to the community. When it is determined that the project is packaged, keep in mind, we get a lot of these that are not fully worked through, that are more concept and idea, but really haven't addressed the nuts and bolts of the project. When it is at a point where those details have been addressed, then we, of course, we do have to publicly notice it. It has to go out to public notice for 30 days. Following the 30 days, we get an agenda to come before this board. This board, and it's publicly noticed all the way through the process, this board will then review the proposal and then make a recommendation to either reject the proposal or advance the proposal for consideration by city council. And then in many cases, we would come right back to city council that same evening, we try to schedule it that way, that same evening for the members seated as council then make a decision on whether or not this is a project that they wish to entertain or maybe provide feedback and ask the developer to come back with some updates.
Thank you.
Mr. Pauli, we're running short on time, so I'm, I'm just going to give you my, real quick, my, my thoughts. That doesn't mean it's the prevailing thought. I, I really hope that we don't workshop this again. I don't, for years, we've all been at this a really long time, and there are whole new families of businesses that didn't even exist when we began on this journey. And so every time we meet, we inadvertently give guidance that I don't even think we mean to give. We learned, we learned last time that we had given instructions that I don't think anybody knew that we had given that kind of instruction. So, look, as far as I'm concerned, you know what we're trying to build here. You know what the vision is. It's an activated downtown that draws people there to live, work, and play. That's always been the vision. I didn't see anything on the prohibited list of businesses that I think we would want to take off that prohibited list. I don't think we want any stockyards and junkyards down there. But if, if you get something that comes to you that's a novel idea that would activate this space and bring people down there, we would probably be interested in it. It may be something we haven't even heard of before. There's business stuff, things now that we didn't even used to exist. There's boutique hotels going in that bring people down with gaming and rooftop stuff. And I mean, so I think what we're looking for is something that's going to activate that area. And I, I mean, we can meet if the board wants to, that's fine, but I don't, what are we going to tell you that we haven't already told you? I mean, for 20 years, this has been going on, it's pretty much the same conversation, so.
No, I'm, I'm perfectly good with that. That might have been presumptuous on my part to think that maybe you did want to...
Well, I don't know. Maybe the board wants to meet, I don't know, so.
Or, or we can play it case by case, and as things come in, we can, we can vet them in-house and, and, you know, viable options can be brought to you.
Since I made that one comment, my intention was, you got, if you have somebody come in, you're going to bring it to us, you're not going to wait till August to discuss it.
That is correct.
Okay, that, that was my point.
Yeah, I know that we have a set schedule once a quarter, those are the mandatory meetings, this being one of those meetings, but our, our rules allow us to request a special meeting whenever the, the business of the city warrants it.
I just didn't want us to wait till August if we had somebody walking the door.
City council meeting begins in two minutes. Any final thoughts or questions, council?
Good.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Sorry I ran long.
All right, we will be adjourned and reconvene as the city council in two and a half minutes.
Very good.
Watching that we changed this system a while back and so this is chosen by your peers and your coworkers. So in my mind, it adds a lot more oomph to this. You know, it could be that just, you know, your immediate boss thinks you did a great job, but when your coworkers vote you as the employee of the month, that really means something. So Cory's been with the City of Temple Terrace Parks and Recreation for 25 years and is currently the Division Director. During her many years of service with the city, Cory has made a positive impression on many who have had the pleasure of working with her. Cory's work ethic is admirable and she is always taking the initiative and going above and beyond what is typically expected. I don't think anybody in the city would disagree with that. When a city event is planned, Cory usually plays a major role in its organization and is always doing her best to make the event successful. She works very well with not only the staff at the family recreation complex, but also with other departments in the city. She is pleasant most of the time.
I'll take that.
She's pleasant and outgoing and has a very positive attitude. Cory is deserving of this recognition because of her uncanny ability to get things done from an outside-the-box perspective. She has an abundance of energy, both physically and mentally, and doesn't stop moving until the job is done. And so I think everybody here would really like to congratulate you as being selected as the April Employee of the Month. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you, City Manager. All the support. You don't do it without a team. And the Centennial Committee, which two of them are back here, that's their vision and we brought that forward. So, you know, thank you to Leisure Services. Our team's great, you know, but we also had Public Works. We had fire, police, we had community development, we had so many different people involved in this and the marketing. It was such a great event. It was a lot of work, but it was a lot of fun. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's give her a round of applause.
Got it. Thank you.
No, no.
You didn't do the picture.
We'll get one.
Thank you, guys.
Don't go anywhere.
Got it.
She's right trying to run out.
Cory, I've got a little off-script recognition for you. If you'd please come back up. And then sit and then stand. So, we have a little off-script. This is not on the agenda. And so, a little surprise for you here. It's hard to do that in a public meeting because everything's on the agendas, but we are allowed. We ran this by the Attorney General. In November of 2024, the Chairperson of the Centennial Celebration Committee appeared before the City Council to discuss the city's upcoming centennial events. The Centennial Committee had done a tremendous amount of work in putting together an impressive event schedule for the city's year-long presentations. Some of our members are here. The lineup included monthly activities and a signature event planned in May that was to be called River Jam. However, due to sunshine laws, the committee could not discuss the centennial plans outside of a public forum, public meeting, rather. So, members were limited in being able to carry out the plans that they had spent so many months organizing. With the year-long celebration commencing in January, Council members believed it was time to have the city step in to help out and authorize the City Manager to have the Parks and Recreation Department implement the Centennial Committee's proposed activities. Cory Collins stepped up to the plate and assumed responsibility for ensuring that the year-long celebration would be a memorable one. Cory has devoted an incredible amount of time and put forth an immense effort to successfully execute the Centennial Celebration, monthly events and activities. Her days have not ended after eight hours because on many occasions, she has worked into the evening to make sure everything is done correctly and weekends, too. She organized and executed the city's River Jam signature event. She created the schedule, lined up the sponsors, coordinated club and civic group participation, coordinated the efforts of the other departments, scheduled all the bands and speakers, coordinated the stage rental sound system, organized the shuttle service, parking areas, and the list goes on and on. We are halfway through the year and Cory's willingness to expand so much free time and energy to organize and execute centennial monthly events has truly made a difference. Events have been a success, have been successful, events have been a success so far and Cory's dedication to our community is truly inspiring. And so, before you speak, because I know a little bit about what you're going to say. You're going to say, oh, it's a team, it's a team, it's a team. And it is truly the team. You're right. But every orchestra has to have a conductor, right? And so, you can't do it without the conductor. And so, we have what we're calling the Centennial Superstar Award.
Sweet.
Council, this is a council award we should all give.
I'm not going to say anything. My grandson has a band performance in 20 minutes in Westlake Chapel.
Okay. Next up, we have a Certificate of Recognition for Public Safety Telecommunicator, Venus Checo Almonte. Please come up, approach the podium. Good evening.
Hello.
We missed you last meeting. You were supposed to get this then.
That is correct.
Yeah. That's all right. That's all right. We kept it in the refrigerator. So, thank you for being here. I'm glad you could make it tonight. So, this is recognition for the Public Safety Telecommunicator of the Year. As an employee of the City of Temple Terrace, Venus Checo Almonte has consistently demonstrated a strong commitment, not just to the Communications Unit, but to the entire city, its departments and the community. She has distinguished herself by taking a lead on mandatory emergency medical dispatch quality assurance and by creating, reviewing, and tracking all required monthly continuing education for the Department of Health. Venus brings optimism, persistence, and a belief that nothing is beyond the bounds of possibility to everything she does. Her compassion and dedication are evident on every shift where she routinely goes above and beyond to help bring positive outcomes to difficult situations. For her dedication and exceptional service, Venus Checo Almonte is being recognized as the 2023-2024 Public Safety Telecommunicator of the Year. So, thank you very much. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. This makes me really nervous. I want to say thank you to my leadership, my commander, and also my supervisor. I'm really grateful to be in a field where I have a lot of passion for and I'm looking for the years to come. So, this is a true honor.
Well, thank you and thank you for what you do. Are you a day shift, night shift?
Night shift.
Night shift. Okay. How long have you been on nights?
A long time. I've been almost 10 years in February. So...
Wow.
February 2016.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here and thank you for everything you do for our city.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys all.
They'll take it. Oh, you want me to hold it?
Yes.
Okay.
You got the brother one. I just got this. This is the real one. Why do I have this?
Wait on, we're not...
Go right ahead, sir.
Come here. I give you a real one. Fire Chief Shane Salmon is here. I see our Medical Director's here, too. She's just going to watch you get awarded or is she coming up with you?
Well, she's welcome to. I was going to point her out either way, so...
Yes. Well, she needs no pointing out. We all know who Brooke is.
Come on, Dr. Shepherd.
Doctor, good to see you.
Yes.
Good to see you.
Did we skip one?
Oh, did I skip one? I did. Well, I'm going to do you while you're standing right there.
We're going to go out of order.
Okay. Whereas this, yeah, nobody would have even known. You just pointed it out.
Sorry.
Whereas this year's National EMS Week theme is EMS Week, We Care for Everyone. Emergency medical services are a vital public service. The members of the Temple Terrace Fire Department, both firefighters and EMS responders, provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rates of those who experience sudden illness or injury. The medical, Emergency Medical Services System consists of first responders, medical directors, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. The Temple Terrace Fire Department's EMTs and paramedics engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. It is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 8 through 24, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Thank you, Chief. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Yes, I would. First, I don't want to be too long, but I wanted to say thank you to the Mayor and the City Council members for taking the time to recognize EMS Week. It does not go unnoticed that we have such a great department because of the Council and the folks who have come before us and kind of paved the direction for our department. And EMS is a very large portion of the Fire Department. It's about 85% of our call volume. And so, our paramedics, our EMTs, very well prepared, very well trained. As the national theme is "We Care for Everyone," that embodies our department fully through compassion, through respect, through professionalism. Our men and women of our Fire Department go above and beyond every day for the citizens of Temple Terrace, and they do it proudly. They do it proudly. So, you guys should feel really good about your Fire Department and EMS. That being said, Dr. Shepherd needs no introduction. A fantastic person, a fantastic citizen of the City of Temple Terrace, but she is the backbone of our agency and allows us to provide excellent, high-quality EMS to the citizens of Temple Terrace. So, Dr. Shepherd, would you like to say anything?
I'll just echo the thanks for acknowledging EMS Week 2025. I think it goes without saying that we have a stellar Fire Department that also provides our EMS services. And one thing that many citizens may not realize is we don't outsource our EMS services like many of our folks do in the area. We take it all in-house and take care of the citizens when they call. And we, because of that, we're really able to provide not only excellent quality medical care, but excellent customer service. And as an emergency medicine physician that's been practicing in Hillsborough County for now 18 years, I can tell you that we are definitely leading in both of those areas. So, I do appreciate your support and your continued support. It means a lot. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. And Chief, we appreciate what you and your folks do all the time. The citizens do. I know we get compliments nonstop from people who have to call 9/11 and get services from the Fire Department. I have never had one person that had anything but positive things to say in the nine years that I've been around. So, thank you. Please tell the troops thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We do have a very special guest with us that is no stranger to many of you. Dr. Steve Spinna is here to join us tonight. And as most of you know, he was our interim City Manager for, what, Steve, it was about eight months, wasn't it? Yeah, I thought so. And really helped us to get stabilized and bring some things along. So, please approach the podium. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. Yeah, the City of Zephyr Hills has proclaimed a proclamation, I guess, recognizing Temple Terrace for its 100th anniversary. I remember when I was Acting City Manager, we were involved in setting up the Centennial Committee. And then it was very nice of you inviting me to the River Jam, but we wanted to recognize you and the things you do. I think Temple Terrace is kind of an unsung hero in the Bay Area, and we just wanted to recognize you. So...
Thank you.
Want me to read it?
If you like.
All right. I'm thinking now I wish I wasn't so verbose. Whereas the City of Temple Terrace will proudly celebrate its 100th anniversary on May 3, 2025, marking a century of rich history, progress, and community spirit. And whereas founded around its iconic golf course, the city was named in honor of the Temple Orange and the picturesque terraces lining the scenic Hillsborough River. And whereas Temple Terrace has grown into a thriving full-service city with 200 dedicated employees across multiple divisions, including police, fire, water, sewer, sanitation, library, administrative offices, and ensuring top-quality service for its residents. And whereas the city has built a reputation for progressive governance, leading the Tampa Bay region in policy innovation and municipal services. The Temple Terrace Police Department and Temple Terrace Fire Department are both accredited and collaborate with regional partners to provide efficient, high-quality public service. And whereas Temple Terrace offers an abundance of recreational opportunities, including a state-of-the-art family recreation center, parks, scenic trails, and an expansive riverfront access fostering a vibrant and active community. And the cities, whereas the city's rich architectural heritage is showcased in its historic district, featuring seven beautifully preserved 1920s Mediterranean revival-style homes, as well as numerous mid-century modern residents that reflect its unique character and charm. And now, therefore, Melanie Bar-Manson, Mayor of Zephyr Hills, along with the esteemed City Council and proud residents of our community, do hereby recognize and celebrate the City of Temple Terrace on its 100th anniversary. We honor its storied past, enduring progress, and bright future as a diverse and thriving home to 28 residents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jason Warren Feltz, is here to receive the proclamation. How you doing? Good evening.
Hey, I'm good.
Good to see you. Thanks for everything you do. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Temple Terrace. These infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated effort of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding and proving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. It is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Temple Terrace to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. The year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby set aside May 18 through 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week. And so, thank you, Mr. Warren Feltz. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the City Council and the City Manager for the leadership and the guidance that the department receives. Together as a united front now, there's over 90 dedicated staff that serve the citizens and the visitors of Temple Terrace every day. Some of them do thankless jobs that, you know, don't go unnoticed, but if they were to not happen, it would be noticed very easily. So, thank you again for the proclamation. Thank you for the recognition. And the staff definitely appreciate the week being dedicated to them for their efforts that they do.
Well, Mr. Warren Feltz, I have to tell you, having been around here for a while, as many of us have been, that you have really, since you've come on board, transformed that department. And the other department employees here, they know it, too. And I know a number of the people that work under you. I've worked alongside them on certain things. And it's an impressive crew that you've got over there. Those folks, I wish the public could see what I get to see that they do. I mean, some of the things they do is amazing and they just jump in and they work themselves. It's unbelievable how, those people are animals. Some of them are just amazing, the work that they do. And they're happy and they're ready to come back tomorrow and do it all over again. And so, and they don't make enough money. And so, some of them are tremendous. So, thank you, not just for the week, but thank you for your work and the work that your staff does. Okay. Council members, has everybody had an opportunity to review our minutes from our May 6 meeting? And if so, is there a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Sisler, seconded by Councilmember Fernandez. Any discussion of the minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays. Minutes are adopted. Next, we have persons wishing to be heard on items not on listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. There are request-to-speak forms in the back of the room. We have a three-minute time limit imposed on all, each speaker has a three-minute time limit. We do ask that they come to the podium and state their name and city of residence. I currently have two requests to speak. And first one is Mr. Loeb. Good evening, Mr. Loeb.
Good evening. My name is Charles Loeb, Terrace Park. First, I'm going to start by helping the City Manager out a little bit by mentioning a couple of things. The new carpeting has been put in the library. It's very, very cushiony, and I enjoy walking on it. That's number one. Number two, I also saw those speed bumps put over on Friday over on, over on Ridgedale, I believe, at Ridgedale. So, they are there. I also did notice that the city, or that Lightfoot will be closed on May 28, not just the 26th for the city's actual annual party, but I did figure it was worth a mention for the employees so that the public will know not to come on the 28th if you all want to have a nice party for the citizens there. But my main topic tonight has to do with Joe Latina Center and these flamingo day passes. Now, many people here got $100. A lot of people do actually need $100, but some people don't. And I personally gave out, well, 95 of the $100. I kind of spread the wealth a little bit. I made a, as the Vice Mayor would tell you, a little, a few thoughts about that over at the Cinco de Mayo Hardboard Meeting. But the point is that I went over to the church over there. It was Joe Latina's church. And if anybody does need the 100, and if anybody does really need the $100, it's really them to help homeless people with these passes. So, if anybody does have, and this means the Council or anybody as individuals, has to do, nothing to do with me, just go give it to them if you can afford to do so. I kind of compared in my mind to the Boston Tea Party. I have a message for the state legislature and the state government up in Tallahassee that this is never going to be tolerated again. Comparatively, for those of you who did not read that, there was over a quarter of a billion dollars in legal fees alone over that business with the court cost on the offer transit thing. That's staggering. That's unbelievable. Of course, I'm sure that includes my $100. But the thing is, I actually thought about dumping it over in the golf or in the bank, but I figured it'd be more practical to go over and spread the money out. But when I heard of the church and how hard this is for them, I decided to go give them the money, even gave them a second amount, a second $10 out of the money I had. I hope everybody who can't afford to will go over and arrange with the Joe Latina Center to go ahead and give them the money if you don't have any other use for, because they could use it really well and to help the homeless people and heart all at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Juan Carlos Perez. Good evening, Mr. Perez.
Juan Carlos Perez, Temple Terrace. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager, and Madam City Attorney. I have three areas that I wanted to touch upon briefly. Number one, given the success of the River Jam, got me wondering when I was there, and perhaps this has been discussed, so forgive me, if any consideration has been given to allocating some of the funds of the Riverside Park project to the River Hills Park, or if corporate sponsorship could be arranged to spruce up a little bit the potential of that small park, which is phenomenal. Number two, the city has currently a bid with seeking proposals from a qualified firm that will do a project in terms of the canopy, the tree canopy. And this is RFP 2505 Tree Inventory Assessment, Urban Tree Canopy Assessment, and Urban Forest Management Plan. This went out on the 21st of April and it closes on the 27th of this month. There's a resource that I wanted to share in case the city's not aware of it, but the Arbor Day Foundation has a hurricane recovery campaign that focuses in Florida, Georgia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Tennessee, and Virginia. And they have $10 million in funds for canopies destroyed by Hurricanes Helene and Milton. All we have to do is apply. As far as I could find online, Temple Terrace is not part of this campaign. I just put it out there in case somebody would want to look more into these funds and could they be brought, you know, could Temple Terrace be brought into this project? And finally, I was riding my bike over the weekend and I rode by the golf course in Sutton Hall, and I noticed there were white lines painted along the perimeter of the building, which obviously signify the scheduled demolition of the building. So, that got me thinking about what are the plans in terms of mitigation efforts, you know, like does the building have asbestos? Are the environmental hazards being considered right now? Noise and traffic disruption, and also...
Public hearings, first item is a resolution approving the Sunnyside Road Complete Street Design to Johnson, Mermerin and Thompson Incorporated. And our city engineer, Brian McCarthy, is here to explain. Good evening, Mr. McCarthy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I'm Brian McCarthy, City Engineer, and I'm here this evening to seek approval for a design task to JMT for the Sunnyside Road Complete Streets Project. The figure on the screen is a general project mapped area showing the limits. The Sunnyside Road is identified in red, extends from the southern end, which is South River Hills Avenue, all the way up to its northern end at Bullard Parkway. Also identified on this figure are three yellow squares that kind of represent the existing speed humps on the roadway. Originally, we were going to resurface this roadway because of an earlier water main improvement project. There are, there are numerous utility patches along Sunnyside Road when we shifted the water main from the rear, rear reedsment over to the front. And so, we, we put most of the water main within the roadway to save some of the tree canopy. So, that's where you'll see a lot of the utility patches. With this figure on the screen, kind of dashed out in red is North 56th Street. And as traffic begins to build, we believe that some of that vehicle traffic will use South River Hills Avenue and then cut up north along Sunnyside Road to get to Bullard Parkway as, as a shortcut. Residents have also reached out to us about speeding along the section and the city's BPAC has also identified this, Sunnyside Road as a corridor to, to review for complete streets, pedestrian, bicyclist improvements. So, we felt there was an opportunity to reconsider what this corridor was going to look like, especially also considering that the city's proposing a, a new park down there at River Hills as well as tying into the downtown CRA's pedestrian master plan. With that, the scope of work includes survey, a public workshop and design. Typically in the FDOT process, transportation planners will spend about a year to review different options, but we felt if we could have the, the public workshop in the middle of a design, we thought we would expedite this process. So, the pros work in front of you tonight is, will be between $184,000 and $259,000, depending upon the outcomes of the public workshop. With that, staff recommend the City Council approve a design task work order to JMT for this effort.
Thank you. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Any council members' questions? I, I have one. So, there'll be one public workshop?
Yes.
So, if there's only going to be one, I mean, that seems appropriate for a, a city street, but we'll really need to double down on getting the word out on that because if they, there'll, there'll be people that say, well, I didn't know about it, I missed it and I don't like your design. And so, we want to make sure that we have as much opportunity for the public to, don't come to the meeting and to comment. Maybe we could talk to the vendor about creating a project website, like FAQ, ability, people have the ability to comment on things on, in that format also. For that amount of money, they should be able to do that, I would think.
Yes.
Other questions, council members?
Just one comment.
Councilmember Kravitz.
There's a really active community watch in that area. The gentleman is a Mr. Hardy, I'd be happy to put you in touch with him. The reason why it's interesting is because he, he knows the whole neighborhood and so, you know, he knows about 30 or 40 people who live along that street. Really nice guy. And so, if you, if you want to get a broad spectrum of input with not a lot of effort, I'll see if I can send his contact over if you're interested. Awesome. Okay. That's all.
Okay. There are no more questions? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution approving the Sunnyside Road Complete Street Design to award to Johnson, Mermerin and Thompson for the amount of, approving payment in the amount of $259,202.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there a discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays. Resolution's adopted. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Next is a resolution approving the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024. And our finance director, Jim Ingram, is here to introduce our auditor, Jeff Wolf, who will, who will report the results of the audit. Good evening, Mr. Ingram.
Good evening, Mayor Ross and City Council. Porvis Mazars, the city's auditor, has completed the annual audit for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024. The city's auditor, Jeff Wolf, will report on the results, there he is, of the 2024 annual finance report. And both he and I will be available to respond to any questions from the city council. I believe we have a slide, a PowerPoint presentation that Jeff will use.
Good evening. Good to see everybody again. And before I get started, I'll just, again, I always start this with thanking you, the council, for allowing us to serve you. We, you know, we work for you. So, again, just, you know, thanks for that opportunity. With that, I'll, I'll get right into it. So, first, you should have, part of your agenda is a handout of our required communications. It's a pretty thick document or that kind of goes over all requirements. So, I'll just kind of hit on some, some key items, but feel free if there's any point you want to have more questions to reach out. But first, our responsibilities as your auditor is to render opinion on whether your financial statements are materially correct. We do test internal controls over financial reporting and compliance, but that really is to help plan our audit. So, as we test utility billing, payroll, procurement, disbursements, it's really to just gain an understanding and if we saw issues, we would adjust our procedures. But we do not render opinion on those controls, but if we did discover anything significant or material, we would include those in our reports. Management responsibility, ultimately, they're responsible for producing that large document. You have the, the Act for, it is, it is management's report and they're also responsible for making sure that they have internal controls in place to provide reasonable assurance that those financial statements are correct. I'm happy to report there was no difficulties encountered during the audit. Jim and his staff is always great to work with, very responsive and it's really a team effort to, to get this audit complete and the reports, once we go over them, will kind of speak for themselves. There was no accounting transactions that did not meet GAAP, no real unusual transactions. Fortunately, it was not a significant year for accounting standards, so there's really no new accounting standards adopted in the current year. And lastly, we completed the, the audit in accordance with the schedule originally provided. So, with that, I'll, I'll go right into the reports. It's, it'll be repetitive, unfortunately, but that is a good thing to, you know, when it comes to audits, I think sometimes no news i- is good news. But so, our first report is our independent audit report. And that is a report on whether the financial statements are materially correct. We had an unmodified opinion, which I know that doesn't sound anything special, but that is the highest level of assurance you can receive that your financial statements are materially correct. Next is our report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. Again, remember, we, we don't issue opinion on these controls, but if we noted a material weakness or significant deficiencies in controls, we would communicate those to you. And I'm happy to report that that report is a clean report with no findings or no issues noted. This year, you did meet the federal single audit threshold of $750,000, so you did require a single audit, a single, a federal single audit. Now, that was really only related to, to the Corona Fiscal Recovery Funds. Those dollars were audited and I'm, and again, no findings, no control issues noted with, with that report. Our next report is our Independence Accountant Report, and this is just a report on compliance with Florida statutes as it relates to investments to make sure you're following your investment policy. And again, no findings or no compliance issues noted with that report. Then our last report is our Auditor General Required Management Letter. And this kind of covers several things. First, if the city was any, in any kind of financial emergency or just saw any significant negative trends in your financial, we, we would report that to you. But again, no, no issues, you know, noted there. As we get into the financial information, you'll see that you're in pretty strong financial position. And if you, if you go back six, seven years ago, that was not the same story. You know, we did have comments on this, so it really kind of shows the significant improvement that has been made over the last five, six years. So, you know, should be, you know, take credit for that as counsel. And then if any other issues that maybe didn't quite meet the, the level of the internal control report, if we had any other additional recommendations, we would include that in the management letter. But again, this is a clean report with no findings or issues noted. So, overall, from the, from the audit standpoint, it was a very clean report. Again, you know, the, the team was great to work with and we appreciate their cooperation. So, I'll just kind of jump into some real high-level citywide financial information. So, this is just your citywide analysis broken up between your governmental activities, meaning your, you know, your general fund, your governmental funds are really supported by taxes and intergovernmental revenue. And then your business type activities, which is your, your, your funds that are really supported by user fees, so your, your water, sewer, you know, things like that. So, I, I think the key is the current ratio, which is really a liquidity ratio to show your ability to pay current liabilities using current, current assets. And the governmental activities is a very strong 3.8. Then your business type activities is 10.9. So, very, you know, from a citywide full accrual, meaning long-term debts, long-term assets, maybe not what you're totally accustomed to looking at through budget or probably more focused on the general fund and those fine fund level statements. But, you know, again, I think the current ratio shows that from overall citywide analysis, you're in a pretty strong position. Onto the general fund, which is obviously your main operating fund. Overall, pretty consistent with prior year, you know, your liabilities, that number mostly is, is related to the under and revenue related to the fiscal recovery funds, which as you, I'm sure you know, will be, be spending down over the next two years. Because, you know, the requirements were how those funds obligated by 1231, '24, but spent by the end of, of '26. So, those numbers will continue to drop. I think the, the key takeaway is your unassigned fund balance has percentage of total expenditures and transfers. This is really your, your reserves. As you see, it dropped from 68 to 55% from the prior year, but again, still a very strong number. And this is really a budgeted spend down and which, well, I think we'll continue to see going into '25, that number to drop. And, and certainly with, with the hurricanes that occurred at the end of the fiscal year, it was good to have those reserves to be able to, you know, be able to use those funds. So, I, I think going forward, you'll still continue to see that number to, to drop down, but again, a very strong, strong financial position for the city. And then just a quick comparison of, of how you ended up compared to budget, your final amended budget. Revenue was down compared to budget by about 4.2 million, but this was really just related to a timing of a state grant, I think related to the EOC. So, just a grant didn't, didn't come in, into fruition during the fiscal year. And that kind of also goes along with the expenditures. You're under by about $6.1 million compared to your final budget, but that again is really just capital expenditures that were coincided with the grant. So, not necessarily funds that will, you know, be available going forward. Those most likely will be appropriated into, to next year's, your current year fiscal year '25 budget. So, with that, that's all I really planned on covering, but if there's any more questions on the audit or the reports, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing on council members, other questions?
I just have one, just for the people watching, to make sure that they do know that this document is fully public.
Question or comment?
It's on the website. It's a comment.
We'll get your comment. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Move to approve the, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report Act for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Councilmember Fernandez, you're recognized.
Oh, just want to reiterate from our CRA, CRA meeting earlier, for those who weren't watching that, so that people watching at home do understand that this document is public and fully available on our website as of right now. So, if they have an interest in looking at the full document.
Thank you. Other comments on the motion? Yes, discussion?
I want to specifically thank Jim and Jennifer and his staff. It's, 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 this is a, a major project every year that takes probably six, eight months to complete. They did a great job. And also the members of the Audit Committee, the citizen Tom Smith and Peter Stephens, who have sat through these meetings. It's a lot different than it used to be. Those meetings used to last for a long time trying to figure out the issues that were going on and helping the staff. They're, they're a lot easier, they're, they're a lot cleaner and it takes good effort on, on, on our finance department, to which I say thank you. It's a great job. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Wolf, for your help.
I just want to say, Mr. Ingram, real quickly, thank you for everything and I wish Dr. Spinnon were still here and City Manager Baia and Mr. Ingram and Deputy Director Ms. Newman and your staff have just done a tremendous job. And I, a lot of us remember when these weren't as clean as they are now. And it's really a good feeling to have that confidence in finance, to know that things are being done above board, everything's the way it needs to be. And not to belabor the point, but I was with Governor DeSantis recently and he was talking to, to us about finances in the state of Florida. He was talking about three things in particular that I'll say much quicker than he did, but he talked about how much they've paid down the state debt that's been accumulating since 1845 or whenever and prepaid that, saving hundreds of millions of dollars in future interest payments. He talked about how they've increased the rainy day fund by, in the state case, I think it's like three and a half times or something like that. In our case, it's like 50 times. And he talked about lowering taxes. Well, those three things we have done here in the city of Temple Terrace, I would love to, I'm not going to argue, but I'd say we did it first. And so, we've done that. We've paid down debt from the high-water mark of like $30 million a few years ago. Now, the whole debt's like hovering around $9 million and, and it's 2% fixed. So, why would you pay that off early? If we wanted to, we could. We have the money. The rainy day fund, it used to be like less than $1 million. It's way, and as Mr. Wolf pointed out, that's going to lower. I don't want anybody to get upset when it lowers. It's not that we, I mean, we have plans for spending that money. We're not just saving it in a mason jar. Some of that money's got, we have earmarks, but, and we've lowered your property tax rate twice in the past few years. So, not a lot. I know it's not a lot, but it's some. And so, all of that, or a lot of that is due to the good management that our finance folks have done. So, thank you, Jim. And so, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays? Thank you, Red. Your report is approved. Next is a resolution approving the transfer of $1,316,213 from the general fund to the Water and Sewer Fund. Mr. Ingram is here to explain.
Back again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. In just, in November of 2000, the city of Temple Terrace purchased property at 10851 Rollerson Ranch Road with the hope of building a wastewater treatment facility, which was later deemed unfeasible. The purchase was paid through the Water and Sewer Utilities Fund. This property was then sold by the city in 2023, resulting in net proceeds of $5,361,975. Our auditor, Jeff Wolf, has recommended that the amount equal to the original purchase amount be transferred from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, back to the Water and Sewer Utilities Fund. This amount is $1,316,213. So, you can see after 25 year, 23 years, we, we've made a little money off of that. Adding this to our other approved unassigned fund balance expenditures for fiscal year 2025 will bring our unassigned fund balance to expenditures ratio to an estimated 35% to 37.5% by the end of fiscal year 2025. As we noted, we do have several projects. So you can see, after 23 years, we've made a little money off of that. Adding this to our other approved unassigned fund balance expenditures for fiscal year 2025 will bring our unassigned fund balance to expenditures ratio to an estimated 35% to 37.5% by the end of fiscal year 2025. As we noted, we do have several projects that we are using unassigned fund balance this year. This is still well above the 25% target set by council and will allow the city to use additional unassigned fund balances to fund one-time expenditures in fiscal year 2025. Staff recommends that council approve the transfer of $1,316,213 from the general fund to the Water and Sewer Utility Fund. And I stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there members of the public who wish to comment? Councilmembers, questions? Thank you, Mr. Ingram. If there are no questions, is there a motion?
Yes. Move to approve the resolution approving the transfer of $1,316,213 from the general fund to the Water and Sewer Utility Fund.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Chambers, seconded by Vice Mayor Schistler. Any discussion of motion?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Fernandez.
I just want, for people that are watching that are not governmental accounting experts, I just want them to understand that the Water and Sewer Fund is one of those business funds that the auditor was talking about. And those funds are specifically designed to be operated using primarily the fees that they charge. So they're not designed to provide support to the general fund. The general fund has its own funding, so this is the reason that we need to make this transfer back. Because since this property was not used for a water treatment processing plant or anything else to do with the Water and Sewer Fund, that fund needs to be reimbursed to make that fund whole. Because the use of this property, obviously it was sold, but the use of the funds that we received from that sale are going to be used for general fund expenditures, primarily creating our new public safety complex. So that's the reason the auditor recommended that we do this, and that is the reason why city council has proposed this motion.
Other comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays, resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Next is a resolution authorizing City Manager Baia to approve a change order with Bandi's construction for the progressive design build of the White Way Utility Service Center in the amount of $1,685,872. I think, Mr. Baia, you're going to discuss this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. So through Resolution 04722, the city council approved the list of ARPA-funded projects. And inclusive on that list was the White Way Utility Service Center. In 2024, the city council adopted Resolution 6224 at its July 2 meeting, authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Bandi's construction for the progressive design build of the White Way Utility Service Center at a budgeted amount of $7 million. And that project was 100% funded by federal ARPA dollars. Since last summer, as the design build contractor has progressed through its design and related due diligence, several additional cost items have been identified, resulting in the need for a change order in the amount of $1,685,872. The additional funds will be allocated, if council approves it this evening, from the Water and Sewer Reserve account. The items driving the need for this change order are a handful, and they're as follows. The first is site work. So there have been some underground site conflicts that were discovered with the piping from the city's wells to the water treatment plant. This required stormwater retention to be contained in an underground storage vault. And then the installation of this vault triggered the modification of other utilities. This item added $565,000 to the project. Second element is mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, or MEP. The contractor has experienced across-the-board price increases in MEPs, mostly in electrical. The price of copper, for example, has increased significantly and has remained high. The generator for this project was originally planned to be a split unit, but was changed to a combined stacked unit to address space concerns. The generator item alone increased the cost from 150, increased in cost from 150 to $325,000. The MEPs added a total of $634,540. Third element is the architectural design. This project was originally contemplated with a very Spartan box-like style. During the design, the contractor was tasked with changing this to more of a Spanish Mediterranean style that would be more in line with the rest of our, a lot of our city buildings, such as the library and the fire station in Lightfoot. That added $336,332 to the project. Fourth element is furniture. The city's original request for proposals for this project excluded furniture, and as the project evolved, the city requested that furniture be considered. This added $100,000. And the last element is a requirement, actually, that was put on the project by the Development Review Committee to add a fence separating the property from the residential on the west side of the site, and this added $50,000. As council will recall, the federal government, and this was mentioned just earlier by the auditor, the federal government mandated the completion of ARPA-funded projects by December 31st, 2026. If council were to approve this change order tonight, the contractor will be able to begin ordering materials. The project is expected to be before council for site plan approval sometime in June or July. The contractors estimated breaking ground by end of July, and about 12 months for construction. Of course, as we all know, with hurricane season, you know, you say 12 months for construction, it could end up being longer. So we are conservatively projecting that the project, if it starts in July, will most, more than likely be completed no later than the end of October, hopefully, 2026. And again, this is all contingent on getting timely approvals. Time right now is our biggest enemy. So right now, we feel confident we can get it done, but the window is getting, is closing on us pretty rapidly. Happy to stand for questions. Mr. Warrenfels is also here, if you have any more technical-oriented questions regarding the project.
Thank you, Mr. Baia. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? If not, councilmember questions? Councilmember Fernandez.
So this is a significant change order that we're looking at. And my, I, obviously you and I have already spoken about this, but I just want to have some of that discussion on the record, and that is that, is there anything that the city could have done in terms of preparing for this project, or thinking through what we needed for the project, or anything that we could have done that would have maybe avoided the change order and also extended our timeline?
So in terms of extending the timeline, I don't think there's anything we could have done for that. We were very concerned about the timeline from day one. This project, although it's, I think the important part to remember is that if council approves it this evening, you're getting in essence a $9 million building for $1.8 million of city funds. The rest are ARPA funds. Not to say that that's not tax money, it is, but these were funds that were doled out for a purpose, to stimulate the economy and recovery from COVID. So I think from that perspective, it's important to keep that in mind. We've looked at this. I think there was a concern initially and throughout, again, about making sure we stayed on course and on time. So right now, we're in a sort of a situation, as well as time has progressed, where we have this tariff environment right now, which is complicating matters, I'm sure that played into it, particularly in the MEP discussion. The architectural design, the concern initially was, you know, we wanted to, we wanted to make sure that $7 million was enough. So originally, when this was looked at, it was basically just give us a, give us a building. And so they presented us with a box. I think the community, I believe a community believes, finds it important to have some architectural style. This is something that's going to live with this community probably for 40 years or more. So I think it'd be important to have it match more or less the quality that we want and everything else that we have in our community, in our inventory. So hopefully that helps answer your question.
Yeah, that's it.
Any other questions or comment later?
I have a question. So this is a change order. The contract already exists with Bandi's?
It does.
Is there a, is there a clause in this, I mean, I know we approved it, but it's been a while. Is there a clause in this contract, I'm trying to remember, that discusses the completion date must be by the end of December 26th, and/or what? Is there something in, I'm trying to recall, do you recall that off the top of your head?
I'd have to...
I know it's not part of the change order, I'm just wondering. If you don't know, I did it.
On that one. Don't get up.
Yeah, I know, now I feel bad.
Don't get up. God bless.
Jason Morris, Public Inspector. Yes, there is a clause in there, and we have discussed these timelines at every meeting we have, which is weekly. The understanding is, with the timely approvals, we will hit the ARPA deadline and the project will be completed. Should that fall outside, there is, I'll need to get the further details, but there is measures in there that would, you know, seek the damages, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. That's okay. I'm behind you.
Any other questions?
No. Sorry.
Okay, council, if there are no other questions, is there a motion?
Root to approve, authorize the city manager to approve a change order with Bandi's construction for the progressive design build of the White Way Utility Service Center in the amount of $1,685,872.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Schistler, seconded by Councilmember Chambers. Discussion on the motion?
I did have one comment, that we knew, we knew when we did this project way back when, that just the fact that all this money was hitting, hitting the market, that we were going to experience a 20% to 30% increase in just market pricing for whatever we did. So change orders notwithstanding, it was a lot more expensive than, was more expensive than what it probably could have been under normal market conditions. So it, but just get the thing built.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays, resolution approving the change order is adopted. Next, we'll move on to council business, and the first item there is the city clerk candidate selection. As many of you may know, some of you may not know, we have, our city clerk is retiring, and we have recruited new city clerk candidates to come in. We whittled the list down, Mr. Mazzario and HR and his crew whittled the list down to the finalists. There were five finalists. We invited all five of them to come and be interviewed, and then three of them removed themselves from the process. So we wound up with two of the five that did come last week to be interviewed by each council member individually, and then we had public interviews in this room collectively. And so the two candidates that we interviewed are Linda Sater and Catherine Paylor Amaya. And so we'll open this up for a motion or a council discussion. And I guess I'll start over here. Councilmember Chambers, anything?
Well, I'm not quite ready to make a motion yet.
Okay. Would you like to start the discussion? You want me to move past you?
Then I will make a motion then. Well, I...
You're recognized to do just about whatever you want.
So let me change that again. I'll make a comment then a motion.
Okay.
You know, we have a couple of choices. Obviously, we have the two candidates. If we don't like these two candidates, or we don't think they're sufficient, then we can always go back into the process.
Correct.
So my view is not to go back into the process. That's just to get that out there. So still on discussion, my choice would be Ms. Sater.
Okay. Is there a motion or...
It's not a motion yet. I want to hear the discussion of the group.
Okay. Councilmember Fernandez.
I think that both of them are very qualified candidates, and I think that we would do well with either one of them. My preference is Linda Sater, being that she is currently employed as a clerk and is very comfortable with that role. And even though coming from another state, I know that they have similar, that's one of the things that we discussed in our conversation, there are similarities between what's required in Kansas and Florida. So I'm more comfortable extending the offer or approving the mayor to extend the offer and negotiate with Linda Sater, number one. However, I do think that Catherine Paylor Amaya would also be a quality city clerk if the council chooses to go that direction. But I also agree, I think I would prefer to choose from one of these two versus going back out into the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Kravitz.
I think they were both excellent, happy to follow whatever everyone else would like to do. So I thought they were both excellent candidates, and I'm comfortable with either one.
Vice Mayor Schistler.
It was enjoyable talking to both candidates last week. They were both highly qualified individuals, although one was far and away more qualified for the open position, without having to spend an extra couple of years in order to get certified. I am very comfortable with proceeding, moving forward and offering, or having the mayor offer the position to Linda Sater.
I too enjoyed talking with both of them. They were both, I think, very articulate, very easy to interact with, very intelligent. Both of them were really impressive women. I preferred Linda Sater's experience in this area more than I did Ms. Paylor Amaya. Although Ms. Paylor Amaya is a very qualified woman, it's in the area of immigration law as opposed to city clerk. And so Ms. Sater, I think, although it is out of state, in another state, she, a couple key areas that I kind of focused on when I had our one-on-one, because I knew they were priority to many of us, not, was her experience and knowledge and savvy with document management systems. And I think we all have discussed before that we could use some improvement in that area, more modernized technology, and maybe a better, a better system in digitizing things and making it more searchable and more readily. And she had experience with that and discussed about what they've done in Olathe with document management systems. So it wasn't, she didn't just get the concept, she has experience doing that. The other thing I discussed with her, because I knew it was important to me, and I think it's important to others too, was some of the administrative support for the council members in terms of forward-looking, you know, public-facing calendars, calendar invites to our commitments, those types of things. And she went into length to discuss what they've done in Olathe with that, and some of that was her work. And so she talked about the way, they've got a really robust system of calendar invites so they know who's going to what. She also talked about something that she, she was quick to say, she didn't take credit for creating this, but it's something they have, and that is a contract central repository for contracts where they have, it's basically, it's a database, but where they've inputted all the city contracts from all the departments. The front work was a lot, because every, you know, every time you buy a widget in whatever department, it comes with a user agreement or whatever. So there's all these little contracts out there that, you know, they're sitting in different places. They input this in this centralized repository, this central management system, and it prompts you to say, okay, this contract's expiring in six months or eight months or whatever it is, this one needs to go out for RFP, or this one needs to go out for bid, or this one, so you don't just notice 30 days out, oh my goodness, we're not going to be able to buy gas anymore, we're going to, you know, I mean, or whatever. It prompts you to take action before the contracts run out. And so, anyway, I don't want to repeat everything that she told me, but I think because of her experience, and particularly in the areas that we're looking for improvement in, I would also think that she would be the more plug-and-play candidate. I think both of them could do it, but I think the learning curve would be much shorter for Ms. Sater, so that's my look. So if that's the consensus, we do need a motion.
So I move that we allow the mayor to enter into negotiations, along with whatever staff is necessary to negotiate for the city clerk position, offering it to Linda Sater.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Fernandez, seconded by Vice Mayor Schistler. There are discussion.
Yes, a question for you.
Councilmember Fernandez.
If, if you are unable to come to an agreement, so say council approves this resolution, and then you begin the negotiations, and you're unable to come to an agreement with Linda Sater, do we... Sater, do we, I don't necessarily think we serve ourselves well by having to reconvene after that. So, should I include in the motion that if all avenues, if those negotiations don't progress, that you automatically move to Catherine Peller Amaya?
If that is the council's desire, then yes, it should be in the motion, yeah. So, the choice, the decision for the council there would be, do we, yes, tonight, would you automatically want to resort to the number two candidate, or would you want to go back out to the market?
Well, and, but, what I'm thinking, I, if you go through this process, we know our city clerk is retiring, we do have a definitive timeline, but I'm, my only concern is, if you, can you do whatever negotiations you would need to do without coming back to council? In that, maybe we've got the parameters of, this is the expectation for what we'd offer as a salary, or whatever, and, and that's not necessarily coming out, but you think you're close, can you continue that negotiation? Or, would it serve the city better to let that process expire, and then come back to us and ask for, I don't think it does, but anyway, for approval to then progress with the second candidate, so.
So, the, good questions, good discussion. The process is, first of all, I can't do anything, it's the council that hires and fires charter officers, I can't, all I can do is negotiate and get, get HR's help to negotiate with, we're doing this already with the deputy city attorney, or the city attorney. We would, I mean, I would be getting help, but I can't do any, I mean, I can't approve anything. So, the proposed contract would, of course, come to council for your consideration, approval, disapproval, or saying, we would approve it if you change this, or this, or this. But, I can take no action without that. It's my opinion, since we are on the clock, it would be beneficial for the council to make a decision tonight, whether you want to go ahead and authorize us to move to the second candidate, or whether you want to authorize us to go back out to the market and advertise this again. If we, if you, if you don't do that, then we would have to wait until the next council meeting and come back before you, and say, you know, it didn't work out, do you want to hire, offer the job to the second candidate, or do you want to go back out on the market? We're losing time. And, and it would be my preference, if it's the council's pleasure, for you to make that decision now, and include it in the motion, do you want to go back out if things don't work out with Ms. Sater, or do you want to offer the position to the second candidate? That's really the only two options. Councilmember Chambers?
Yeah, so, we can either do, modify the motion to include that, or we can vote on this motion, and then make another motion after that.
It would be cleaner if we modified the motion.
Okay.
I think that actually, you should take to the motion as it's been made, and do the other part as a second motion, because depending on how the motion is made, I'm guessing you're probably going to pass the first one, but this may end up throwing, you know, a monkey wrench into that motion, if ever, if we can't get a consensus on the next step.
All right.
So, if we can just do the first motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's a good point. I stand corrected on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember? That makes sense. Councilmember Kravitz?
Just a quick suggestion, how we might potentially expedite the process, and I don't know if this is possible, but we could authorize Mayor Ross to negotiate up to a certain salary range and conclude it, potentially without having to come back here? Would that be an option?
No. No, we already have a salary range, but it's only other positions in the, all the other, the contract has to be approved by council, I can't hire anybody. The council has to hire. So, that would, that would give the mayor, I mean, I appreciate the confidence, but it would give me, the mayor doesn't have that much power.
I was just thinking, speed is the essence.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, no, I appreciate what you're trying to do, I just, but unfortunately, we can't, it's got to be the council. So, we do have a motion on the table to make an offer to Ms. Linda Sater, doesn't seem that that part is bearing a lot of discussion, if we want to take, you want to discuss that further, or you want to take a vote on that, and then we'll discuss the second part. Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? Mr. Nazario, you and I are meeting in the morning about something else, and I think we'll just roll into this too. Okay, now, second decision. Thank you, Ms. Shone, for keeping this clean.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
That if this contract doesn't work out, that we authorize the mayor to enter into a negotiation with Ms. Catherine Peller Amaya.
There is a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. I, I have, I'm not sure what to do, because I'm conflicted on this one. I do understand the time crunch we're under, and I liked Ms. Peller Amaya, she interviewed very well. But when we went out for the city attorney years ago, and then we went out for the city manager a few years ago, the council had very specific skills, KSA, skill, you know, knowledge, skills, and abilities that we were looking for. We interviewed several city man, city attorney candidates, and we hired the one that had the most city attorney experience. When we went and did a national search for the city manager, we did the same thing, we brought in finalists, and we, we interviewed them against the KSA's that we had already agreed we were looking for. If we're, think about this process in those terms, I don't, Ms. Peller Amaya, as nice as she is, and as smart as she is, she doesn't meet any of the KSA's that we are looking It certainly expedites things, and I don't think any of us would dislike her, I mean, she's very, but, on her first day in the office, how much knowledge is she going to have about being a city clerk in the state of Florida? And that concerns me a little bit, and, and I mean, it's not that I don't think we've established, it's not that. It concerns me a little bit that for the first, however many months, she's going to be relying on her assistant city clerk to answer all the questions about how to do code board, and how to, how to do public rec, well, public records. And then, one of her first tasks is to hire a deputy city clerk, and the person that she's looking for as a deputy city clerk is going to have, hopefully, more experience in this field than she does, which is, I don't know. So, I'm good with it, if you guys are comfortable, and I'm just, but I'm, I have a little concern about that. Vice Mayor?
I gotta move, go along the same lines, very nice lady, very, very intelligent, very capable, but we're not a city manager, I'm sorry, not a city clerk, and it's going to take two years of training to get there.
I hope not.
Till she's certified, it'll be two years. And again, we have essentially zero knowledge of what needs to be done on a day-to-day basis. And in our discussions, there was even hope of carryover, or overlap of the existing city clerk to help in the, in the initial timeframe, in the initial few months. And I don't know that that's feasible, I don't know that that's what we, that's what we want. I don't want to be back here in three or four months, when everything comes to a screeching halt, and we have to start all over again. I, I was glad we separated the motions, because while I'm 100% in favor of, of Ms. Sater, I can't support a quick jump over into the second candidate at this point. I would almost prefer to go back out into the marketplace. However we could do that, I don't know what our fallback position is, given the time crunch. But I would have a real tough time supporting the, moving on to the second candidate at this point.
Thoughts? I'm torn on this, I really am. I don't know, I'm not dug in on.
I, my thoughts are, I do think that, my biggest concern with what we're facing is more of the document management and retention, which would actually be implementing a system that we don't have right now. So, I would, my preference would be if, and I did, I seconded it, so that we can discuss this, but my preference would be that we actually go back out into, and advertising it again, just because of the skill set that I think we need, that we need this city clerk to have from the beginning, because that's, that's one of the things that, if you look at our document management system, it is sorely in need of an upgrade, and we need somebody who's, can start that immediately, as well as the step right into the duties of the city clerk, without, without the learning curve. But, that's, that would be my preference.
Councilmember Kravitz, would you share your thoughts?
Sure. So, really lovely to see all the focus on document management, and I appreciate that from everyone, thank you. I think it's super important. I think one facet that we might be judging a little harshly is the degree to which Palmer Amaya's skills are generalizable. So, she is a very accomplished person with decades of experience, and she's an attorney who has worked for the federal government, so she's familiar with how government works. And I think that there's a value there that we might be selling a little bit short. That being said, if the temperature of the room is that we want to go back into market, I think we could also create a motion that would immediately initiate that process, and we could draw from any of the other, I believe it was 37 other candidates that we received. So, I think that there is already a pool where we could make a selection. So, I don't, I don't think it's that devastating to go back into the market, but, you know, in, in defense of the other candidate, I do think she has accomplished a lot in her life, and you can clearly tell that she is very intelligent, and knows exactly what she's talking about, and I have, I have no doubt that she would quickly get up to speed. And there's also some value in having someone who's able to exercise independent legal judgment, when they're in the role of the city clerk, when they are dealing with so many legal and legally sensitive issues on a day-to-day basis, so that's my thought on that. But as I said before, I thought both candidates were excellent, and I thought many of the other candidates that were in the other pool of candidates that we didn't bring to an interview were also excellent, and be happy with most of them, so.
Well, that is an option we weren't really considering, we do have the remaining applicants that we didn't interview, I didn't really, glad you pointed that out.
Procedural, procedural question. What's our fallback? Let's, in the off chance that, that Ms. Sater doesn't, we can't come to any kind of terms, what do we do besides tie Ms. Mooney up in her office and not let her retire on time? Is there, I don't know, that's, you know?
Well, there's, there's, actually, Councilmember Kravitz pointed out something we weren't considering, and that is, we do have the 30, whatever other candidates that met minimum qualifications that we didn't look at closely, so we could go back and sift through that.
Oh, I agree with that.
We could go back, or we could offer the job to Ms. Peller Amaya, or we could go back out, those are really the only three that I can think of. But that's the fallback, I mean, one of those three things.
No, 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 that's not what I mean.
Oh.
I mean, logistically, say, Ms. Sater doesn't, Sater doesn't, doesn't accept, or we can't come to terms, and we want to go back out, there's going to, it's going to take a couple of weeks or so in order to do that. What is, is, is Ms. Maggie capable of running the office for a short period of time? I mean, she's, she's only been there a short while, I'm wondering what logistically has to happen within the city clerk's office. Have you, have you had experience with that, Mr.?
Mr. Nazario and I have talked about this scenario, so Mr. Nazario?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. In the event that, that was to happen, we would, we would go out there and try to identify an interim city clerk. I think not only will we do that, but I think as, as a city staff in general, we collaborate, we work together as a team, so we would do all that we could to make sure that the city clerk's office is supported.
We have a plan. Just make sure we have a plan.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. So, to expand on that, is there a program, or a group, like we got Dr. Spina for our interim city managers, a group that, city clerks that could bring people in, the retired city clerks that might come in for a short period of time?
I'm not aware of a group, but we, we will try to lean on our professional networks to try to identify someone who's maybe retired, who's willing to offer us that service. I know, we would, we would look everywhere we can to identify someone who can, you know, expect.
I did ask staff to call Rob Duncan, which is who we got Dr. Spina from, that company, I don't know what the outcome of that contact has been.
Okay.
And I know, City Clerk Mooney has a retired city clerk acquaintance that we have used that is not available to come in as a full-time interim, but is available.
She has taken a position with another city now.
Oh, so she was available.
But there are, there are other clerks that are recently retired that we could probably resume.
Okay. We've also talked about the possibility of piecemeal in this, when Mrs. Mooney gets back from her travels, maybe using her as a consulting for, a consulting fee, that kind of a model.
Do you remember, a couple meetings ago, I made a motion not to accept her resignation? I want to fall back on that, but anyway.
So, the, the plan is that we, we have a plan, but I'll be candid, the plan's kind of sketchy. I mean, we don't have names, and we don't have somebody ready to step in. We have ideas, but.
So, now another procedural question, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Would it be better for us to, for me to withdraw my motion, and Councilmember Fernandez withdraw her second, or do we need to move forward on the motion?
I cannot answer that for you. It doesn't sound to me like that was the consensus of the group, so, but that's up to you.
What was the consensus?
It seemed.
No, to do what? To all the motion?
The motion was to extend the offer to Ms. Peller Amaya.
Well, the two things is, if the consensus of the group is not to do that, is to vote the motion down, or I can withdraw that motion.
Either one. You can withdraw it, if the second withdraws as well, or you can go ahead and take the vote, and then move on from there. It may require then another motion.
So, yes, to get this off the table, we could either call for the vote, or you could withdraw it, and then we could discuss the next thing.
So, they're very valid points, and I made the motion so we can discuss it, so I will withdraw my motion.
I will withdraw my second.
Okay, so.
Was it?
What's that?
No, it was Councilmember Fernandez.
So, I have a, I heard a couple things. One is that we could go back through the other candidates and take a look at them. But I would submit to you that we wouldn't want to tell HR to go sift through them, and then wait for our approval to select the next couple to bring in. I think we should, at this point, empower them to go ahead and make that invitation, other than us, rather than us having to wait for a meeting and say, well, I think these three are the next three or four, let's just let him pick them, so we don't have to wait. Is that, hang on just a second, and then I'll get you. Or, two, go back out. But if we could decide that tonight, it would enable us to kind of speed the clock up a little bit. Councilmember Kravitz?
I was just going to strongly urge, just based on my own experience in hiring, it would be really good to have more than 10 people, or five people in the final round, you know, I would, I would really cast a broad net, because you have a really high drop-off rate, as we just saw, of the five, only two made it to the interview. Probably going to be a similar range in the next sequence if we go into that, and then there might be people in the final selection that we don't like, so I would, I would, I would try to at least double the number of people relative to the first go-around, that we invite for the second go-around, if that is the course that we go.
That's a lot of people.
Well, but it won't be, that's the thing.
Well, maybe, yeah, maybe. Go ahead.
In the event that you, you go back out, the HR team can invite the applicant who applied during the first window to apply during a second window as well. We can inform them that a, city clerk wasn't selected, and they're.
If you have more than five that are on the list already, that look like they're good, like their credentials are really good, I don't know that we need to be locked at five, but I don't know that we need to be locked at 10 either, if you just go, well, I don't really think these people are any good, but I need three more. really think these people are any good, but I need three more." I think that's not good.
I can present, isn't, isn't many that are, I'd say it's comparative, or they're, they're close in comparison. So if, based off of who's in the top five, if there are candidates that are similar, to have similar skills, knowledge and abilities, I can also include them in that selection.
So what do you think of a motion that would say, "We instruct HR to go through the list of applicants that currently exists and enough of them look like they're a good enough match to schedule them based on his judgment and we'll get Jeannie to schedule another day of..." And that number may be more than five. It may be however, right? Because we only got two out of this one, so maybe we go to whatever. And if that doesn't work and in your estimation, nobody really looks like they meet what we're looking for, go back out. Or, I don't know, a week, two weeks, whatever it is, you go back out. That could be in one motion and we give him some direction tonight.
Agreed.
Does that sound like a plan or?
It wouldn't be, sorry, Mayor. It wouldn't be difficult for us to do both.
Do both?
Yes. In the event that we did this, I would, I would post a job for a, a short window of time to try to continue to expand on our candidate pool under the circumstances.
Okay, well, we can make a motion to do both then. Because I don't have a better idea. I don't know what else to do.
All right, let me clarify that before, I'm willing to make a motion, but you said to do, call what we already have plus go back out? Or do both?
Yes.
Okay. Ready for a motion?
Sound all right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Got a better idea? I mean, I don't know.
No, it's a good idea. Two-pronged approach, I think, yeah. One, draw from the people we have and then if we have to, we go out. That's in case that our preferred candidate does not accept you.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you?
Okay. In the off-chance that the mayor is unable to negotiate a reasonable, negotiate successfully with our first candidate, then authorize HR to go back and review what we've got and go back out into the marketplace for a shorter, a short period of time to come up with a, 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 a new list of potential candidates for review.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion of the motion.
Brief discussion. Would it be a good idea to amend the motion to provide HR with wide discretion, within HR's discretion or some discretionary language? That would give them a bit more scope of action? Or is that?
I think, I don't...
I think it was included.
I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Then, no problem.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. I will, you going to be here for the rest of the meeting?
Yes, Mayor.
You are now, right?
Pretty much.
All right. If not, I'll call you in the morning and we'll, okay. Thank you. Appreciate your help. Any other council business, council members? Councilmember Kravitz?
So, just very happy about the document management discussion. Thank you very much for that. That's a big relief to see that moving forward. I actually have a request. I appreciate the trust in the flag project. It's been a pleasure that I've been able to use my own resources to move that forward. It's been a mix of my campaign infrastructure, my staff and my personal funds to try and generate the engagement that our community really wanted to have. So we've made a lot of progress, but the progress is at risk now. I was informed that my staff can no longer work on this project unless the city council formally authorizes it, so that's what I'm asking for tonight. My staff have been really essential in moving this forward. I've sent out emails to thousands of people. I've used my own mailing list. I've been processing the entire workflow through their, through my staff. They've been handling the procurement and contact and outreach to previous submittals and the 2024 effort failed. And they've been doing the intake for other than else right now and they've been communicating with people about the design process. So it's been a pretty significant undertaking. And I don't think it was anyone's intention to block this work, but right now, without this approval, the effort is going to stall. So, you know, I, I hope everyone here has the shared goal of having this be a really good symbol. And so that's why it'd be really sad to see all this promising work go to waste. So that's why I'm making a motion to have the city council instruct the city manager to authorize my staff to serve as volunteer assistants under my direction with access to the relevant city communication tools for the duration of the flag project. So, I hope there's a second.
I'll second. So like, but I have questions.
I, I don't, okay, you first. I, I'm not even sure, I don't understand what we're talking about. I know, oh, I understand the email part. What do you, I don't know what you're doing. I'd, what, I'm not sure what, first of all, I don't, what staff and what projects and what, I don't know what, so anyway, but you first. You second.
Those are my questions. So I guess specifically, who's the staff and what are we, what do we need our city staff to do that they're not, you know, that they're not, haven't been able to do without, which is very true because we, we did decide multiple councils ago that any, any individual city council person cannot incur staff time more than four hours on a project without the city council agreeing. So it's not one of us directs the city staff individually. So that's where that came from, was a past council. But so, so I, I guess I need more information about what you're asking for.
Yeah, no problem.
Well, let's get Councilmember Fernandez's questions.
Is, are you yielding the floor to me?
Yes.
Oh, she still has the floor. She asked you some questions.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the people in question are my staffers, Alex Weston and Maria Donovan, both very talented and exemplary workers and they've been helping me manage all of the intake. So it is a big process to manage all of these submissions, to reach out to everyone about their designs, make sure that communication is clear about the guidelines and the expectations for the flag designs, which we developed in a workshop a while ago with public input. And of course, also emailing thousands of people in order to do the outreach is quite difficult. So each time an email goes out, it requires about 20 separate emails I have to process. Do-not-contact requests, for example, if someone gets an email from me about this, then they can write in and they can say, "Please don't contact me anymore," and then I remove them. So I have them helping me make sure that people don't get contacted when they don't want to be contacted. And so, you know, just trying to do my best in terms of moving the engagement forward. The other issue with using city infrastructure is that the city doesn't have a mailing list for people like I do because they don't have access, have access as far as I'm aware to voter databases, which are public. So I've been trying to progress this with whatever is at my disposal in order to meet the brief that was given to me and produce a good design for everyone, or at least a variety of good designs that people can then select from. So that's, that's the background to that. I've tried to work with city staff and it has been mildly successful. So I, some posts have been made on social media once or twice. There's now a, a screen on the rec center that shows if you have a flag that you'd like to submit, then you can look at the city website for some more information. And, you know, in my discussions with the relevant stakeholders, it was made clear to me that the way that I had been processing emails in the past was no longer desired, even though it's been done like that for quite some time, quite transparently. So that's why I'm here to make this request, because I'd like to integrate them, like I said, as volunteer assistants with no cost to the city. These people work for me and they're very good and they are great to have and they're very nice people. And use these resources to promote everyone's objective up here. So that's all it is, as, as has been the case for months, so.
Councilmember Chambers?
I, I too, I don't understand, your two staff members just want us to say, "Okay"?
Yeah, so it's a, it would be...
It won't change anything, just us saying, "Okay"?
It will change something now. Sorry, I apologize for interrupting.
No, I was just curious. That's my question. I mean, what are you asking for us just to say, "Okay"?
Yeah. So I was told recently, about a week and a half ago, that the integration that I had assumed possible for these two people to be able to help me was not acceptable. And so I needed a city council vote to authorize them to engage in that way with the city communication infrastructure, email systems and so on. So that's it. Basically, they've been using my email. I'm also happy to run it through an email that's assigned to them. Anything like that would be fine. I don't want it coming from a private email because we have FOIA and Sunshine records, retention issues with doing that. So if I were to move it completely outside of the city system, that would easily be possible for me, but I don't think it would be compliant and I'm trying to make sure that we do this by the book, so.
I'd have a follow-up.
Well, you have the floor.
Thank you. Okay, so you're just requesting that your staff or anybody that's working on that through you can have more city resources?
No. No city resources at all. All of it, it's absolutely no burden to the city, other than the provision of an email account. So my understanding is that in the past, this has been done once or twice, like with Frank Chalora, and that he had some people that he brought on.
And my last question is, how do I get staff?
You can hire them on the market like I do, I, like I said.
I'm good, thank you.
I'm perfectly, you know, I'm perfectly happy to try and use my own effort on this, but it, it can't be a one-man lift. This is too big of a project.
Comment, but no more questions.
You know, I can't, I can't do the entire A to Z process as one individual. I also have other obligations that I need to attend to. There are only so many hours in the day. And if I'm, you know, processing all of these emails and all of the submissions, the do-not-contact requests, sending out emails to thousands of people, organizing workshops, that kind of thing requires a lot of effort. And as Councilmember Fernandez pointed out, that isn't an effort that the city employees should have to provide and, or can provide potentially, because they also have other things to do that are very important. So this is an additional, from my perspective, symbolic project that we're trying to do, right? And I'm more than happy to do it, but it needs your help now because as of a couple, a week and a half ago, I can't do the way that I was doing it. I have to do it this way and that's why I'm here asking you for your support. So that's all it is. And that means approving two email addresses to be given.
Vice Mayor?
I have a real problem with it. I know this question. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a motion? Say this comment. I think this thing's becoming way out of hand. It's a lot bigger, bigger scope than what I think it was initially intended to be. I can't, I, I, I just don't see it being of, of any value to us at this point. I really don't. And to, if we're told not to use city emails, I don't want to authorize city emails. I don't, I don't know when this was done before. I'm not aware of this in, for, for prior individuals. And I'm still fuzzy on staff. Are these people you hired personally to work, your legislative aides more or less? Or, okay, well, I, this is getting way out of hand. I'm sorry. My opinion.
So, first of all, I don't think we, we can, even if we wanted to approve this, for a couple of reasons. One is I think the charter, well, I know the charter very clearly distinguishes between legislative and administrative and this is clearly 100% in the administrative. This would be akin to us telling the city manager that, "I don't care what you want, Jason's going to buy a dump truck." I mean, we, we just can't do that every time that we want to feel the need to inject and give the city manager that. Moreover, even more importantly is, we are required by state statute to observe certain cybersecurity protocols, which include vetting people in the hiring process, it includes ongoing training for, or access to our databases, even, even just emails. It, it requires certain best practices, which are getting tighter all the time. I think we're working towards two-factor authentication, if I'm not mistaken. If you open suspicious phishing emails, accidentally open the attachment, there's consequences to that for employees and council members, which I don't think we have. This, this would be, in my opinion, if we approved this motion, it would be approving something, illegal's probably too strong a word, I'm not sure, but contrary to the charter and to state law. I don't know if it'd be illegal, that might be too strong, but it would certainly be against the state statute that requires us to adhere to cybersecurity practices as defined by the state. We don't have a choice in some of this stuff. Aside from all that, I, you know, you're an elected official. You don't work for us or anybody else, but I, I have the little concern about, what are you doing? This is, you've been on council nine, 10 years or whatever cumulatively. I've been on it nine. You guys have been on it almost eight. I'm the mayor. I'm, this is all I do, 40 hours a week, sometimes more than that. I don't have any assistance. You have two employees, you're sorting data, you're making mailing lists, you're doing... I have to wonder, are you, are you acting in concert with this council? Because we don't know what you're doing. Or are you doing your own thing? That's not our form of government, it is to do your own thing. I don't, I mean, I'm the mayor. I'm out here every day doing the politics of the city and I don't speak for the city unless this council empowers me to. I, I come, I always come back to you and say, "Look, I'm going to this thing. You want me to be in favor of this or not? We're going to Tallahassee. Should I advocate for this or not?" Now, that's, you know, neither here nor there, but it does beg the question. So anyhow, I...
May I respond?
Well, in a second when I'm done, you can, yeah. You, you're the maker of the motion, so you'll sum it up. But I can't be in favor of this, primarily because I think it's contrary to the law. So now you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. So, just, let me break down the chain of command here. There was a 5-0 vote authorizing me to promote the flag project and to proceed with it on my own discretion. And the goal was to maximize community engagement because that is where it failed previously. I have reported whenever there's been any news about what I'm doing. There have been multiple sessions here where I said, "Under old business." I have sent emails to everyone importing, informing them about what we are doing with the flag project. There have been three, I think, such comments from me. One was that I was planning a public workshop, which I then subsequently planned in full public view. It was in these council chambers that it occurred. Anyone, including you, Mr. Moss, could have attended. So I'm not acting out of any sort of sense of ill order here or trying to disturb anyone. I was asked to take this project on. It was not part of my original plan when I was elected. I did not campaign on the issue. It fell into my lap because the previous group failed to bring it to the conclusion successfully. I didn't ask for any of this, but I'm going to do a good job. Now, the other thing is that I have also reported on the subsequent intake of designs. I have said, "We have reached out to the people who have previously designed flags." That took four months for me to just get their email addresses from staff in order to reach out to them and contact them to see if they would still like to be part of the process. I have informed everyone up here about the fact that we have adopted the NAVA guidelines after the public workshop as being the reason why we are going back to the original submittals and asking them to potentially adjust their flags. And I have also reported on the new submittals that we have received when we have received them. And I have not done any of this outside of the scope of what council has asked me to do, so I firmly reject all of the accusations that have just been made against me. Completely, roundly reject them and I have the receipts. So I will not have my character or my actions besmirched in that way here. Please.
I wasn't accusing you or besmirching you of anything.
That I'm a rogue agent is essentially what you were saying, I believe?
I did not say that. Lay the tape.
Acting outside of council authority, doing my own thing, those were the words that I heard.
Okay.
I, I have a question, though.
Councilmember Fernandez?
So I, I, I know you're asking council to give, to agree, but I don't, I still don't really know what you're asking me to agree to. So are we asking for the, the people, the staff people that you have that have been helping you to actually be assigned, like city email addresses?
So just to address one other concern, if there is an intake process to put these people through so that they qualify in terms of whatever is required, I'm perfectly fine to put them through that. I know that other staffers have interns. I'm sure there's some process for bringing people into the city to do work unpaid. I know that some of the interns here are unpaid. So put them through whatever process is required, if that's needed. All I'm asking for is for two email addresses so that they can do outreach to people who live in Temple Terrace, who are interested in the flag project, who would like to do it. And if it's too much trouble up here and there's no way forward on this, then I'm happy to give the project back. happy to give the project back, believe me.
So, so I just want to clarify, so what you're asking is basically the marketing department to take in two interns?
That would be fine if they can work under my direction. That would be perfectly fine.
To help market the project? That's what, that's what you're asking?
No, that is not the motion.
That's what it sounds like, that's why...
I can, I can adjust the motion if that would be a solution. I'm not, I'm not hung up on how we get to the goal. My goal is to have a good symbolic flag produced, and for me to not have to literally walk door to door without any staff assistance, begging people to submit a flag, because I don't know how I'm supposed to do outreach. If all I have is my own two feet, and I'm not allowed to call people or email people or do any of these other things that you need to do, and I have zero budget for marketing. So if someone would like to explain to me how the flag project was supposed to proceed without me using my own resources, then I would absolutely love to hear how that would theoretically look like. Please, anyone, I yield the floor.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favors?
Wait, I have a comment on that. You've already gone through this process. You've had submittals, correct? You do have submittals, correct?
Yes.
We had submittals last time. I, I disagree the fact that your, your statement was the previous procedure failed. We produced a flag that we voted on. Some people didn't like it, that's what restarted this, but we had a procedure. It did not fail. It wasn't to the liking of some people. So we have those. You have other ones. Why don't we just, why don't you just bring forth what you have? We could authorize you going to the marketing team. Quit asking the questions. You've asked this for months. To get submittals, you got them, bring them forward.
May I have the floor?
Yeah, well, he asked a question. You can certainly answer it.
Yeah, sure, sure. I wanted to comment that the previous flag was produced by staff. The mandate was to produce a flag from the citizens, a bottom-up effort. I'm sure that if we asked staff to produce a flag, they would be in a position to do so, and I'm sure they would be able to quickly produce a flag. But it would not be one from the citizens, and it would not be what the mandate was that was given to me. I do have some submissions, and I'd be happy to bring them forward anytime. I've been sharing them as time goes along, and I, I don't think that the process has fully concluded, and I'd like to do more outreach. We are just starting, like I said, it took four months to get the previous submissions, the contact information for the people who previously submitted, over 20 people. It took four months just to get their email addresses, and right now, we are trying to reach out to them to see if they would like to update their designs, and that has not concluded, because four months puts us just a few weeks ago. So just a few weeks ago is when I finally got the contact information for the first batch of submittals. So if you want to cut the process off now, yes, there is an outcome that I can provide. I do have flag designs that meet the NAVA guidelines that have been submitted by citizens in Temple Terrace that I can share. But you would be cutting the process off very early, and you would be denying all the people who previously submitted an opportunity to revise their designs, which they still might like to do. I don't know. They might not, but there's a, there's a possibility there. So that's, that's the consequence.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have more questions. And so I, so what I'd like to know is, what, what specifically is the effort that is needed to meet the outreach goal that you have in mind?
Okay. We need to dispose of the motion, not continue having, but there's a motion on the floor for two email addresses. So are you ready for the question?
Point of order. I don't think the discussion on the motion is concluded.
Okay. The discussion on the motion is for two email, that's the motion. So is there discussion on the motion?
Yes. Question to the staff. Can we do this? I know there has been some security concerns.
So, based on our interpretation of the cybersecurity policy we have, this is not allowed, which is the reason that, we've explained that to the council member, hence the reason that he's bringing it up here this evening. What happened, whether what happened 10, 15 years ago, it's kind of irrelevant. Cybersecurity has become something more of a concern. I wasn't here 10 or 15 years ago, and now there was probably Sally in this position. So we're looking at the rules and the controls we have in place today. That's been our determination as to why we're not, you know, we've not allowed this to happen.
Follow-up. So you clearly said that it's not allowed, but you also said that's why it's here tonight. So if we vote for this tonight, it would be allowed, or is it still...
No, no, I said it's here tonight. The reason he's, the council member's bringing it up, I don't control what the council member chooses to bring up.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
One last question. I believe that the motion also indicated or also included that the city manager would have to devote communications staff at your direction.
No.
Then I think the motion needs to be restated so that we're on the same page, because right now, I'm here...
The motion is very simple. It's for two email addresses for Councilmember Kravitz's staff. That's the motion.
May I briefly just...
Briefly, because you've had the floor about six times. So yes, you may sum it up, and then we're going to call the question. So yes, you may have the floor.
I'm sure there are technicalities, and I'm sure that with all the expertise that we have up here, we'll find some way to address those, even if, for example, I thought the very creative solution there was to have them come as interns for the marketing department and be at my direction. I know that there are interns at the marketing department. I don't see how we can have interns there that comply with this policy, but it would be impossible for other people to comply with it just because they're helping me with this project. So I'm sure there is a clever way of addressing this. I'm not prescribing a particular method. If there is no desire to do this, then I'm happy, as I said, I will bring my results from the flag project, and then I will happily give it back. I have no issue doing that at all. So if that is the outcome here, then I'm happy to withdraw my motion, and I will give you the flag project back. Thank you very much.
May I address the intern question, just for clarification?
So the interns that the council members are referring to are interns that were included in the city's budget. They are employees of the city. They undergo a background check like any other employee with the city. They work in the departments that they've been assigned, and they work for the supervisors in the department who are city employees. It's, it's a different animal than what is being discussed here this evening, just to clarify that.
They're also covered, they're also covered under our workers' comp, and they, they, even if they're not paid, and they're just volunteering, because we've had legal interns in my department, they fill out the same application forms, it goes to HR, their background is checked, and they're, they're covered under our workers' comp, but they're supervised by city employees, not supervised by a council person.
Okay, the motion has been withdrawn. I'm going to pass the gavel to the vice mayor, and that has to be recognized. Okay, I make a motion that we table the flag project.
Okay, I'll second you for discussion, and then I just, I have a question. And that has to do with outreach.
I'm sorry, I have to, shock. I wasn't expecting this. Mayor, Councilmember Fernandez, you're recognizing. You can get the play there.
Well, and that, so I just have a question about, is there a way that, this topic comes up often about outreach, not necessarily about this project specifically, but outreach to the community when we're trying to get them information or request some sort of input?
There's a motion to table.
Right. So I, I just want to know, is after we discuss this, if we table this motion, are we still able to talk to staff about other ways to outreach?
There's a motion on the table to table the flag project.
Point of order.
You can bring up...
Excuse me. If, if, if the point of this was, I'm raising a point of order, may it be recognized?
Well, I'm going to recognize you, but you let me recognize you.
Please.
Okay. Your point of order, you recognize.
Now, if the motion was withdrawn, as I just heard from Mayor Ross, then what is the point of the motion to table? A non-existent motion. So either the motion has been withdrawn, which I don't remember doing, but I'm happy to accept it because I suggested I would do it. I don't understand what the point is of the motion to table. I don't believe it's procedurally appropriate to table a motion that has been withdrawn.
I don't believe...
I'm not asking to table a motion. I'm asking to table the whole flag project. The motion withdrawn has nothing to do with the motion I'm asking us to table.
Thank you for the clarification. So when you say table the flag project...
Is he recognized?
I, I have another point of order. The flag project is not an agenda item that we can table. We can make a motion to end the flag project, but a tabling motion only applies to an item that's on the agenda.
Okay. I revised the motion to end the flag project.
There.
Do a second of that.
I seconded the original motion.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't know.
So the revised motion is now to end the flag project.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion to, to table or kill?
Yes, sir.
Hmm?
Did you recognize me? Hi.
Hi.
Okay. So the, the motion to table, or, you know, if we table, end, it's now end the flag project. You know, our goal was to have a Temple Terrace flag. It's been talked about forever. I'm not willing to stop that goal. I still think we need a flag. We've had a flag in the past, so I don't want to just kill it. However, it's gotten out of hand, so, but I don't want to get rid of this project forever unless, you know, we can, it'll be revisited by another council down the road a year or two from now when, after elections. I guess I can do that. But I don't want to stop the flag project, you know?
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Motion is to stop the flag project altogether. I have a comment that I'd like to make in that regard, and that is, I agree, it's gotten out of hand. I was at the only public hearing that, or public session that I knew about it, and before it was over, out of the five people here, 25%, or 20% of the people were saying, I'd like to vote for nothing. So I think it's, 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 it had a little bit of traction, but it's, it's, it seems to have gone nowhere fast. So I would support that motion. So any other further comment on...
You said you would support the motion to get rid of the project, the flag project? Okay.
So, okay, any other comments? Yes, sir.
Real quick, it can be brought back up by anybody on the prevailing side of the vote at any time in the future. So it doesn't have to be dead forever.
Okay.
As long as you're on the prevailing side of the vote, you could make another motion in the future to resurrect it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, please, I think I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, like sign? If she cares. Give that back to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Any other council business?
I...
Councilmember Fernandez.
I have, I do, I have three items, but I have spoken with the city manager about them, and I think he's going to discuss them. So I don't know if, if you want me to ask the questions in council business or wait until the city manager's report.
If, if he's going to discuss them, why don't you wait? Maybe he'll answer your questions, and then, but I'll be sure to give you plenty of opportunity.
I, I think he's gonna, I mean, we, we talked about it, and so I think he's gonna talk about them, so...
That, that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. Any other council business? Okay, new business? Board reports? City manager's report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At the last council meeting, we had a resident who's also a chair of our Overwatch Task Force, I believe, Mr. Meade Lewis, who spoke and presented us with a binder of information on a termite eradication pilot project that has worked in, in New Orleans, in Chile, and Spain. Presented the information. We, staff has reviewed it. He was looking at, in the proposal, to have the city take on the leadership of this project if we wanted to look at doing it here in a particular area that he recommended. There was a cost associated with that of about $96,000 out of a total cost of $192,000 that he had projected for the pilot. Would have impacted 96 homes in the area roughly east of, south of St. Augustine Avenue, east of Riverside Park, and west of Glen Arvin. We have researched and looked through the, the material that was provided. In the cases of, definitely in New Orleans and Chile, the, the program was funded entirely by the federal and the national government in those, in those entities. In New Orleans' case, it was an earmark, and it kept going for about eight years, and then after that, when the, when the government phased out earmarks, they did away with that program. And this request here was unclear from the material whether, who was going to be responsible for the other half of the cost. We assume that that might, the responsibility would lie with, perhaps with the property owners. We also had questions about the, in the other instances, it seemed like all the properties were involved. In this instance here, if we had property owners who had to pay for this, or we couldn't figure out a way to how to compel property owners to participate in this, in this project as well. So that led us to questions about the efficacy of this, beyond just the basic question of how we would pay for it, too, and if that's the direction the council wanted to go. So it, we, we think it's a, it's a, it's an interesting program. Obviously, in, in our community, we know foremost in termites are, are, you know, they're pests, that's definitely, we're sort of the epicenter of that. But because of these questions, and because of the fact the others were funded 100% by the federal and the national government, at this point, where staff is not recommending that we pursue this, but of course, this is up to the council. If you wish us to take a look at this, we will. But our recommendation right now would be to thank, obviously, Mr. Lewis for bringing it forward. We'd, we'd send him a note of appreciation for that, but at this time, we're not proposing to do anything else with this unless council directs us otherwise.
Counsel, discussion?
I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
And now you want me to answer your questions? Sorry.
Do you want me to ask them? Or I wasn't sure.
I think I remember a couple. I think I've got a couple of them, so if I miss one, please tell me.
Okay.
So I believe you had a question about the tree study.
Yes.
So the tree study, actually, Mr. Pettis mentioned it earlier, so he kind of took the wind out of my sails. So Councilmember Fernandez had asked about where we were with the tree study. As was mentioned earlier, so the tree study was, the request for proposals, pretty substantial request for proposals, was released on April 21st. The due date is May 27th. There will be evaluation, assuming we get responses, there'll be an evaluation period that'll start as of the 28th. We anticipate having a short list of responses notified by June 9th, and then we're hoping to start preparing awards to announce who would be the preferred firm by June 26th, and then have them, have a contract to the council at some point in perhaps August, is what it's looking like right now, because it's a big period of time we'd have to negotiate a contract. This was, again, just for the public who may be tuning in, this is for a tree inventory and condition assessment for the urban tree canopy and for trees located on specified city-owned properties and within public right-of-way through the city. This was per the council's budget to allow us to take a look at our tree canopy and best means of maintaining it and trying to enhance it going forward. Does that answer your question?
Yes. There, there have been some questions online, so I wanted to see if we could update it.
Okay. I believe the next question had to do with water, our water main system and our water lines in our, in our community.
Yes.
And so there have been a couple of breaks in the, in the water mains that have come recently. Obviously, we know during Hurricane Milton, we had a lot of water main breaks. The ones during Milton were almost entirely due to the hurricane and the movement of trees and root lines bringing up the lines. A community, in, in this case, in our community, we've got infrastructure that is of different vintages. You've got infrastructure that might be brand-new, such as the River Park development off of Temple Terrace Highway. You have other infrastructure that probably dates to the 60s, other to the 80s, some to the 1920s. 1920s infrastructure has probably largely been replaced, what's in the public right-of-way, but the connections sometimes might still have some older remnants to them. So because of that, with the different vintages, it is not uncommon for there to be cracks that emerge over time in different service lines. Sometimes, not just sometimes, but it's pretty common that the water main itself may not be what, what's broken, the sort of main, main service line down the middle of the road, but it could be some of the service lines. For example, in the Capwood Avenue instance recently, it was a service line that had suffered a crack. Capwood Avenue instance recently, it was a service line that had suffered a crack. So again, the city has inherited a lot of this infrastructure, perhaps almost all of this infrastructure, from different developments over the years that were built. They put infrastructure in. We inherit it, and we maintain it as best we can. So when we have those, those breaks, our goal, our primary goal is to make sure that we can make that repair without losing pressure to the line. Because once we lose pressure to the line, then we have to do precautionary boil water notices. So we try to avoid that at all costs. That's why you've probably seen images of our workers, you know, up to their shoulders in water, because they're trying to keep the line open so they can keep, make that repair. It does complicate the repair, but it prevents us from inconveniencing people. Now, there are instances where that's not possible. We're just, for the circumstances involved, we can't do that. And so when that happens, we issue a precautionary boil water notice. Typically, in the past, what we would do is if there's a small area of service that's impacted, let's, I'm using a number just for reference sake, 10 or 20 homes, we'll just put door hangers on those homes to let them know this is what's happened. Now, if we have a break that deals with a much larger area, we'd have to take other incidents, put on the city's website, and try to do social media and other things. So that's typically what our process has been. Being proactive, Mr. Warrenfels and I have talked about, is there a more proactive approach we can take to some of our infrastructure? In fact, we fund, this council funds lining, for example, of our sanitary sewer pipes. So we're trying to come up with a more comprehensive approach to doing that, so we can actually map this out in a more systematic way and show our staff and the community, this is where we're going to be operating on to replace and line our pipes. The water lines are slightly different. There are some areas we know of that are concerning, for example, where we may have already noticed some, some depressions, or some areas we know the pipe, this handle pipe is problematic. If we can get ahead of that, we will. But there is some inconvenience, definitely some cost to going in proactively and trying to do that, because then you're impacting a wide swath of area where you may not have a break. But, you know, that is one approach that we can look at. But again, that, that is a different, more intensive approach. You there? And the third one, you're going to have to remind me of. I apologize if there's-
Oh, well, that had to do with the new city app.
Oh, yes.
And people subscribing to it. How, how are we doing with that? And how are we getting people connected for when something like this happens?
Sure. So thank you for that. So the Temple Terrace in-touch app, so anyone who's watching, I encourage you to download it from the, the App Store or the Google Store. This is, it's called See Click Fix. That's sort of the backend name for this. And what it allows is anyone who wants to use this, they would register for it, and then they're able to take a picture, for example, of something they see in the community, and maybe a pothole. It could be a tree down, or whatever it might be. If you take the picture through the app, it geolocates the address. There, there are menus there, so you can pick which category you're, you're sort of answering if it's potholes, you know, you pick that. That will be then directed to the staff who's germane to that particular issue. It allows us to track our performance a lot better also systematically. And the good thing also is if you register, by registering, you're allowing, you're allowing us to create basically a subscription list that we hope to build over time, allows us to push more information out to the public, in addition to our other means that we currently have, newsletters and things we're looking at for the budget for next year also.
So I, I just have one question about that. Would it be possible to do a, an app tutorial and broadcast it on our TV channels?
Yes. Yes, we can do that.
Anything else, Mr. Beal?
Yes, sir.
City attorney's report.
I have nothing.
Good. Anything else to come before the council?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If not, we will stand adjourned.